Good morning, Commissioners. Welcome to the Monday, October 20, 2014 workshop of the Orlando City Council. This morning, we're hosting our second public workshop on our vehicle for hire ordinance. And as you know, staff has been researching for months, other cities, meeting with the industry representatives, for all those who are interested and involved. And we're looking at how we might update our ordinance to accommodate new providers like Uber and Lyft and continue to balance that with the industry as it exists. Since our last workshop, OPD's had another industry forum and is here to present where we are, thinking-wise, relative to modification to the ordinance. And Byron, why don't you start us out?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. It's a lot different from last time around. I don't know if the interest is waning, or we're certainly done such an outstanding job of communicating. I'll go with the latter, perhaps. So this morning, as Mayor outlined, it is our desire, our intent, as expressed at the last council meeting, that we would hold a industry meeting to share the information that was presented at the last work session with the industry. And we did that, which was the second one. We had an industry meeting on June 27th. That was the first one, in which we sent out notice to all the permit holders and other interested parties. It was well-attended at that time. I'd say well over 100 or so folks attended that first industry meeting on June 27th. We then had the work session at City Council on the 29th, September 29th, and identified categories, proposed changes. And at that time, the work session, we would go back, have more definitive conversations about those specific ideas or categories, get the input, and then come back to City Council today. So on October 13th, we had held that second work session, industry work session, sent out notices to over 600 permit holders, as well as notified others who were not current permit holders but having interest. I'd say maybe 50 or so folks, much smaller than the initial meeting, but we did send out notice. About 600 folks were notified, about 50 attended, 14 spoke. If I were to summarize in three broad categories, just to those comments, I'd say there was line that says, hey, look, this isn't about TNCs or not, this is about any entity needs to follow the rules. Whatever rules are established, we want there to be consistency. Another broad category was about the benefits of the transportation network companies in terms of providing some opportunities to independent drivers. And I think the third category would simply be, hey, why is this being considered? So today, Jody Litchford, Deputy City Attorney, Jody Litchford, is prepared to take you through those specific recommendations that were shared with the industry. And it is our intent to begin to narrow this down so that we can get specific feedback and then go to next steps based upon that feedback today. So after Deputy City Attorney Litchford goes through the proposed changes, gets your feedback, then we'll discuss those next steps and then begin to hopefully begin to bring this to some finality. And with that, we'll call on Jody.
Thank you, Byron. Mayor and Commissioners. As Byron said, you know, we've spent staff, and you see me and Byron, but the police department staff has spent an extraordinary amount of time, vehicles for hire staff and the command staff in the police department, working on this issue, meeting with represented interested parties, industry representatives of all nature. And we basically wanted to come back to you with sort of two options. That's not to say that they can't be modified in any fashion that you choose. But to make it easier to have this discussion, we have sort of a possible option, number one, which is essentially no changes, no substantive changes to the current regulation of the vehicle for hire industry, other than two changes that are recommended by our staff in order to enhance their enforcement and safety efforts. And that would be to do an NCIC, in other words, a national background check for drivers, as opposed to what we're doing now, which is just a state background check through the FCIC system. And the second change that they would like to see is to increase the penalties for each violation, so that, in a sense, we have more teeth in our ordinance. We are capped at $500 for violation by state law. But we are not, I think we're currently doing 200 for the first and 400 or 500 for the second violation. They would like to go to $500 each violation. And they are impounding now, but we want to add some provisions in the ordinance to make it clear what the process for that would be. So that's one set, that's a possible place that council could direct us to go. The other group of proposed amendments would be a reduction of barriers to entry, to allow alternative vehicle-for-hire groups, whether they be driven by apps or otherwise, to enter into our market. And so we have some specific proposals there. I don't think there's anything you haven't seen before, except we got more specific on the minimum fare. But the idea would be, for public safety purposes, that we would recommend we continue to do background checks on drivers, that we continue to do vehicle inspections on vehicles or require vehicle inspections, that we continue to require insurance pursuant to state law, that we might add a new category of permitted vehicles for hire. Our public safety people believe that a four-passenger capacity would be the correct limit on that new, perhaps, vehicle-for-hire category, that there would be no advanced booking requirement, that discrimination in service would be generally prohibited, and that there would be a minimum fare of 25% above taxi rates. And to speak to that for a moment, we do set the fare in taxis. We set a minimum fare only for limos of $35 for the first hour, and you have to charge at least an hour. So it's a minimum of $35 for luxury vehicles and for limos. The metered cab industry is required to do certain things that the limo and luxury vehicle industries are not required to do. And generally speaking, those things are to provide 24/7 dispatch, to provide service to every call, regardless of when or where the call is made for service, and to provide 10% of the fleet to accommodate mobility impairments. So those things have a cost. And what we've heard from the metered taxi industry is that if the city's going to continue to acquire those things of the metered cabs, which are things that I believe are important in our community, that the cost of that needs to be accommodated in whatever new vehicle-for-hire category we allow into this industry or we bring into the city. So the proposal is that no maximum, it would not preclude surge pricing and some of the other things we hear about in the transportation network companies, but there would be a minimum. And the floor would be 25% above taxi rates. Our current taxi rates are $2.40 per mile. That would mean the minimum rate for someone in this new category would be $3 per mile. So that is sort of the concrete place we ended up. We believe it's enforceable. We've talked to the police department, and it's a pretty easily calculated rate. Couple of other things that we have talked about, and I think we talked about these last, but along with any system, we would want to, of course, increase the penalties to $500 per violation, require driver backgrounds to include NCIC, delete the requirement of posting rates outside the vehicle, but rates should be posted inside the vehicle for metered taxis, or that requirement would remain, and require companies to either maintain a local office or a sufficient process for return of lost property and receipt of complaints. So those are sort of the two options that we've sort of boiled down to present to you in terms of going forward with regulation of vehicles for hire industry. They're not the only options, and as you know, cities all over the country and the world are doing all kinds of different things. Many are not allowing an expansion of the vehicle for hire industry. Some of them are allowing it, and they're doing it in so many different ways that it's impossible to, it's impossible to even stay up to date with. In fact, Austin just, on Friday, I think, passed some new regulation, but they didn't pass it in any sense that I could get a copy of it. It was more like, this is how we're going to proceed. I mean Houston's, I mean, just to give you an idea of what you deal with, this is Houston's, this is Houston's ordinance that they just passed the week before last. So stuff is going on all over the country. People are looking at it different ways. The bulk of communities are either not allowing alternative vehicle-for-hire transportation network companies, allowing them in a free-market system, or allowing them with some rate restrictions and other restrictions for vehicle safety. So they're sort of falling across a continuum, and I can't find a best practice. I wish I could find a city that had been doing this for a while and had a great ordinance and had been working for, you know, months or years, and that's just not there at this point in the regulation of the industry as it's adapting. So I think that the staff recommendation to you is, if we're going to make changes, that we make them sort of incrementally, that we make some changes to remove market barriers, if that be your will, and that we see how that works. And there may be time when then we need to remove other market barriers that were either unexpected or seem unnecessary as we go forward. But I think the staff thought was, if we're going to make some changes, that they'd be, this won't be the last time you'll hear a vehicle-for-hire presentation, I don't think. But if we're going to make any changes, that we make them sort of slowly and modestly and see how they work in this community, and then come back if we were unsuccessful.
Jody, it seems to me that there's general consensus around the background checks and the insurance of the vehicle inspection, and it really comes down to rates. Is that accurate?
Well, I think that's very accurate, although I think some of the transportation network companies would ask for a different system of backgrounds and safety. They'd like to do their own and to be trusted to do that. But I don't get the sense that the police recommendation would be that we want to maintain our ability to do those checks to ensure public safety. So in terms of consensus in the industry, some of, I would say, the transportation network companies would like us not to be involved in those processes at all. But that's not the staff recommendation.
And then there are cities that have done minimum rates or fares and that they're complying with?
Appear to be. I mean, I read, all I can do is read the media, so if the media is to be believed, and I suspect that we would hear if they were not, so they appear to be complying with them. There are some cities, I think, where the transportation network companies have said they will not come into the city because they can't operate under the restrictions. And so I don't know if they are or not. But there are certainly cities where the transportation network companies are operating with, under minimum fare restrictions or rate setting.
Okay. Comments, questions, thoughts? Commissioner Sheehan and Commissioner Stewart.
I had a couple of questions, Jody. I know that there's been a difficulty with, especially dealing with the airport, when there have been pickups being made, especially not where the taxis are, it's been blocking up the regular pickup lanes at the airport. And the way that they've been dealing with that is officers have been using their phones and their credit cards to try to book the pickup. And you have to use a different phone every time, because then Uber, or whoever, the Lyft, or whoever it is, just blocks the number, and then you can't, you know. So how are we going to deal with that in terms of knowing who's picking up without any kind of authentication? Or, you know, how do we make sure that Uber or Lyft or whoever is making sure the background checks are being done by the specific driver, making sure that the background, that the insurance, all that stuff? How do we make sure that they're actually making sure those things are happening?
Yeah, okay. So you've asked a lot of questions there. Let me see if I can start with, well, the airport has met with at least one of the transportation network companies and believes that it can come up with a system once we permit. Now, you know, if you don't have a permit, a city permit, you can't be at the airport. So right now, all airport operations are illegal, and they've been doing some stings. But they have had conversations with at least one of the major transportation network companies about where, you know, once they are legal in the city of Orlando, then they have worked, they're working on agreements about where they'll pick up and what fee they'll pay.
Tom Draper is here, Jody.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think they have a system that they think they can...
Yeah, come on up.
Can you might say that you've got some systems that you might put in place to...
Good morning. Tom Draper, Greater Orlando Aviation Authority. Exactly what Jody was saying is, we're doing, we're continuously monitoring the curbs. We do some special operations with the city's vehicle-for-hire office, and where we had a mystery shopper come out, and you're absolutely correct, so he uses his credit card, he gets a day's worth out of it, because in the middle of the night, it gets checked and then he's blocked out. So we've gone through quite a few of his cards. So we're finding it much easier just for staff, the ground transportation staff that's on the curb now, the folks in the vests are very good about identifying those folks and alerting us. And of course, as we go up and move, they'll continue to move down the curb or little circle around a few more times, so it's kind of a cat and mouse game right now. But as Jody was saying, we have met with both companies, we've had communication with them, and we've told them that they have, of course, they have to be city-permitted to operate out there, but we think that we can come to an agreement with them.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And Jody, I had another question. Since we had the last workshop, there have been more stories about, there was a story about an attack, which, of course, hopefully the background checks will take care of. But one that I'm really concerned about was the $400 drinking downtown fare that the poor lady got hit with. So if we're not going to put a maximum on there, and, you know, I mean, if someone's using a pickup service, chances are, they might be out partying or whatever, and they might wake up the next morning and have a $400 charge. I mean, you know, that's why we have the limits in place, to make sure that people aren't, especially, we want them to be responsible. We want them to take cabs if they're incapacitated, but we don't want them to be victimized if they're in that kind of condition. And I can say that. I don't drink anymore, but I have a lot of friends that do, so.
There are some cities that have put limits on the surge pricing. I think that it's unlikely that a fare that was really generated wholly within the city would ever hit that kind of, you know, I think what the Denver situation was, somebody took a car out from Denver, out to an outlying concert venue, and then on the way back was charged the surge pricing. Although if you believe what the company says, they had to agree to that price like four separate times before they were ever charged. But as you say, sometimes people have had a lot to drink and aren't really reading what they're clicking. And so I don't know. There are some jurisdictions who've tried to limit the surge pricing to two times the normal price or something. And that would just be up to council, whether they really want to get into the business. I worry a little bit about being into other people's businesses too much. And I kind of think, if you clicked four times, I'll pay $400, then you're crazy. But yeah, so I don't know. But, I mean, we could try to limit the max as well.
I'm just concerned that, you know, letting it be out there, no matter, you know, and let it be unlimited, that there could be a potential for, you know, for something like this happening to someone else, and then we'll hear about it. That's the thing.
Right. And that's something we could certainly explore with the industry, if we go this route, whether there would be a reasonable cap on surge pricing that they would not, you know, that wouldn't unduly restrict their operating methodologies.
Yeah. I mean, like I say, once you're in, once you, once you agree, you know, and if it's not clear, I just have a concern, because again, it's a service, there's a reason why we restrict these services, and I just want to make sure that people aren't going to be victimized. That's all.
And certainly, we could have some disclosure requirements in there easily, so.
Okay. That's all ahead, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart?
Jody, let me follow along the same lines. One of the issues, I think, for me, is the issue of some type of identification on the outside of the car. And I don't know what that is. That may be a required bumper sticker, or it may be a magnetic sign that's a certain size on the side. I mean, I don't know what it is. But I really feel like, especially at the airport, you only get a chance to catch the guy one time, because they have the unique ability to block out people who they don't want. And so therefore, you're kind of stuck. And I don't know quite how to do that. I think the idea of a licensure, licensure requires some type of outside notification, and then we have to figure out...
We've talked about a bigger, you know, our vehicle-for-hire permit now is pretty small. We've talked about a bigger, brighter sort of permanent...
I'm not asking about a, I understand, I'm not asking for a vehicle-for-hire permit, I'm asking for a notification. I'm asking for them to say, on the side, this is an Uber car, this is a Lyft car, this is a, taxis are already notified that way. The idea being that when somebody picks up, an officer could say, hey, you know, let me check your, you know, let me check your registration, let me check your license, and by the way, you're in the wrong spot, so you can't pick up here and move on. That's a concern. I think that addresses some of the issues in terms of where I think the greatest amount of violation is, is at the airport. The other challenge we have is, and as much as I would like to say it, Uber has created a system that blocks out all the things that we're trying to address. And that is that anytime somebody, either the driver or the passenger, put a negative comment, and effectively, they can now block them from future, from future use, as I understand it.
And we did talk to them about that, and we asked them if they would have any problem with an ordinance requirement that said they can't block law enforcement. And they said, generally speaking, they wouldn't have a problem with that kind of regulation, although they said they still wanted to be able to block anybody if they had cause. In other words, just because you're law enforcement doesn't mean that you don't, sometimes on your personal time, get into a car and, well, provide cause. So we told them, we thought we could work through that in some fashion, but the transportation network companies seemed fine with the regulation restricting their ability to block law enforcement.
I don't, I profess to not be an attorney, and I'm proud of that. No offense, Mayor. But when you say with cause, is what I would, my brain would jump right to, okay, what are the definitions of cause? Is it the fact that somebody got sick in the back of a car because they picked them up when they were drunk, or is it the fact that the guy just yelled at them because he charged them too much money? I don't, I mean, the idea would be that, and I, and I, look, I don't disagree that we ought to do something, I just don't know what that definition would be, except that you go back to the core, if the driver is licensed properly and the car is identified in such a way that's appropriate, and there's some type of minimum charge so the guy can't pick up, I think we're beginning to go down the right path. I don't know what that final path would be, but I feel like the mayor is, the easiest thing for us to say is that you, somebody, if you're driving in our city and you're using our roads and for you to make money, then we have some kind of responsibility for that. I don't know what that is, except that we ought to make sure that if you're driving on our roads, you ought to be safe. We require that of taxi cabs, we don't require that of the others, because they just, they think they're self-regulated, and that's okay. The other alternative is, you know, bag the whole thing, let's just go to self-regulate, let it go. And I'm not sure that's the right thing for the citizens of Orlando, because I'm not sure that self-regulation in the private industry has been successful. So there's got to be something along the same lines.
Well, I think you've identified, I mean, one is easy and one is difficult. And it may be, we'll have to work on it over time and see what actually will work.
Let me ask Tom.
One point, Commissioner, to that point about the choice. I just want to point out that what we're proposing here, at least this conversation, is creating another class of, essentially, luxury vehicle, or at least something along those lines, as opposed to the metered. Keep in mind now that the luxury drivers have that same choice. I'm not trying to defend or not, but just want to be sure that there's clarity here that if I'm the limo, I have my bricks and limo company, I make that choice, you call if I want to arrange transportation with you as well. And so that's why for this one, we're a little bit in the middle here. Just want to add a little clarification, or at least clarity to the distinction here in terms of the choice argument.
Well, and I don't disagree. I'm just, what I'm trying to do is kind of navigate those same orders with you. But Tom, one question I was going to ask, and I apologize, I didn't want to be rude, but do you feel, with what you're currently doing out there with OPD at GOA, do you feel like you're making an impact? Or do you feel like you're just, I mean, we've got a cease and desist, and we've told them to stop, and we've done everything we can from our standpoint, but do you feel like you're making any kind of impact out there?
I do feel like that we're making an impact, but I think that it's very small.
Okay. All right. And so how would you, if there weren't any barriers, how would you change the current system to have a greater impact?
Well, I think that you're on the right track here by the rules that you're talking about, the changes that you're talking about here, I think is positive for that.
Yeah.
So it's all encompassing, because we've all been communicating back and forth. I mean, that's one of the luxuries, or one of the very, one of the huge positives that we have is the relationship that the airport has with the city vehicle-for-hire office. And talking about how we implement or how we enforce and how they enforce is almost hand in hand. So we're very complementary to each other.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So Jody, the last, my last question really is, do you think that this can make an impact? I mean, if we look at some of the changes that you're recommending here, do you think this, have the ability technically, as well as manpower, to have an impact?
Oh, I think if you make the changes, we'll see a lot better system. I think we'll have more availability of more transportation choices. I think that the entire industry will probably get better with a little competition. I think that we have, we'll be providing an opportunity for people who perhaps are now operating illegally because they have no way to operate legally. But that argument goes completely away once we have the ability for them to operate legally. My sense was, from people who spoke at the hearing at the police department, that they were willing to operate legally, interested in operating legally. Now, we just heard from a small group, of course, that probably the group that isn't interested in operating legally wasn't there. But I think that everyone feels like, once we have this permit process in place, that we'll be able to really put teeth in our enforcement. And the airport has some ideas, which I know they don't want to announce publicly, about how they're going to be able to monitor this successfully, once we get this permit process in place. So I think we all, we all feel cautiously optimistic that this would be a good thing.
All right. Good. All right. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, sir. Jody, I totally agree with the NCIC background check. Of course, we have to do it in the medical field, though what are the disqualifications? Is there a list provided to us?
There is a list of disqualifications. I might just get, I mean, our vehicle-for-hire people may know it off the top of their head, it's in the ordinance, and I sort of actually read it this morning, and I probably have the ordinance here. But we...
Do you know off the top of your head what the disqualifications are?
If not, I will look quickly through my ordinances and find them, or I'll get them to you later.
Florida Vehicle For Hire Supervisor. There is a lengthy list on that. I don't want to have any memories.
Well, yeah, just if you can provide that a later date for us, that'd be great.
Yeah, Minister.
Any prior convictions, felony convictions for the past five years is in there. Driving under the influence is also in there. Other sex offenses in there, too, that is going to prohibit you from getting a permit.
Okay.
And other ones in there, too.
Oh, here, I got them. Driving under the influence of drugs or alcohol, reckless driving, any crime that's designated as a felony, any crime involving the sale or possession of controlled substances, or any crime involving drug paraphernalia. The Florida RICO Act, exposure of sexual organs in any crime defined under Florida statutes 800, which is a sex crimes statute, and prostitution. Those are five-year, you cannot have been convicted of any of those within five years.
Thank you. So yes, and I do agree that OPD should be the ones that supervise that. The verification and insurance, the amount, I know we went over it the last session, but the amount... but the amount, and are the drivers covered from pickup to drop off? And one of my other major concerns were why, how would we monitor them being en route? Are they covered once they have a shift? And I guess there's no shift put in place, because my concern is also for that driver to be covered since, for say, from what I'm being told, Uber or Lyft is the one that cover their insurance. So if that driver is on the clock, per se, and we can't monitor that, and they're en route to pick up a client, and there's an accident that occur, because I believe the last one was once there's a client inside the car, they're covered. I'm not sure. I'm just asking questions. But are they covered en route to pick up that client, or are they covered while they're going throughout the city? Because I want to make sure that, that driver is covered, and also, maybe if there's an accident, that person that's hit while they're under the Uber or Lyft umbrella is covered.
Okay, so I'll do my best. I'm not a really great insurance expert, but the Florida statute requires a commercial vehicle policy of combined single limits of $300,000 for any commercial vehicle operation. We require, then, the larger vehicles, if you're eight passengers or more, to have a million dollar coverage. The transportation network companies, the major ones, both have told us, but I haven't seen it yet, that they have insurance policies of up to a million dollars that operate certainly while the vehicle for hire has a passenger, and from the point they accept a passenger. So while they're en route to pick up a passenger, when they have the passenger in the car, until they discharge the passenger, that that million dollar policy, we are told by the transportation network companies, that those, that is covered. So from the time they accept a passenger all the way through, again, they would have to prove that. They would have to provide the insurance policy, that the policy would have to cover the vehicle that's being permitted, and our insurance people would have to look at it and be reasonably, and be confident that it meets the state statute.
Great. So we have that part.
And I think our people, our vehicle hire people are in pretty, and our police department is in good communication with the Department of Insurance to make sure they get that correct.
Great. And I guess the last question, well, comment in a, in a roundabout way that I have, is that gray area there, the prohibit discrimination in service. Because I think there was a conversation about the ADA, those that might be economically disadvantaged, that don't have apps on their telephone, or seniors, especially that's some concern in my particular district, or throughout the city. You know, I can't shop at Bloomingdale's, but I can go to Macy's or Dill's. They haven't paid me for that. Shout out, but that's where I go. So I want to, but there are options for if you can't use this particular service. So I want to make sure that we don't progress because others might not be able to use this service. But there are other entities, such as mirrors, that do provide these services. So when we do get to some of the, the areas where we, indiscrimination, maybe we need to work on that a little bit more, so we just don't phase progress out versus, you know, I think that's, that's going to be a gray area we might need to address.
Well, we do, yeah. Well, how we define it, I mean, we are going to prohibit it, then how do we, how do you prove it, and how do you find it? I don't know. I will say that the transportation network companies are, they're really working on, especially transportation alternatives for persons with different impairments, because it's a market they want to serve. And they all agree that they will not discriminate. And so how we would, you know, maybe there's not a, how we would figure that out, I don't know. But we can certainly prohibit it, and if we can prove it, we can stop it. So.
Well, I guess what I, what I was saying basically is, because Uber works on an app, and maybe there's a certain demographic that might not have that, at least they have other choices.
Yes, ma'am. That's absolutely correct. And you're correct. There are some folks who will not have both a smartphone and a credit card, although there are some alternatives. But you're right, it won't serve. It will not serve a portion of the communities. And that's why I think we're pretty careful in our recommendation that preserves the traditional providers of transportation vehicles for hire that are currently serving those communities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gray, then Commissioner Ortiz, and then Commissioner Ains.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jody. I apologize, coming off a cold little horse here. Wanted to give you my feedback, because I'm struggling with this whole concept, and I apologize. If you, if you take a step back, we have certain ordinances on the books now, I assume for a reason. We pick, we have 24/7 accessibility, we had handicap accessibility, we had a minimum fee. I assume those are in the ordinance because they were deemed appropriate at the time we adopted the ordinance. We now have a company or companies coming in that want to change those ordinances. And we also have employees in the, in the business that are telling, telling me, or I'm hearing secondhand, that they're excited about this opportunity. The one missing ingredient here is I have yet to meet or introduce myself to any of these alternative providers. And so if, and I'm picking on Uber, but I'll pick on, my understanding is, as part of this challenge to come up with new rules and regulations, no one from Uber showed up to the meeting. And so I guess my question is back where it was before. Before we spend time changing an ordinance, I would like to hear some kind of reassurance from the industry that they agree with the ordinance, or the proposed change, they'll abide by that. And I'd also like a briefing from what's in my district, the airport, which is a key component, to make sure that that process is there. The folks at the airport know how to run the airport. I'd like the benefit of that. Whatever we decide to do here, and I think we've got a ways to go, I think we should run this on a trial. I would recommend we consider a trial for this before we absolutely change the ordinance, to see if it works. Because I'm still not convinced, primarily because of the lack of involvement in this process from these folks that are trying to change it. I'm open to change. We, as a city, have always been open to change. But if you want to change the rules, it seems to me, you come to the table, you make suggestions, and then whatever the group negotiates, you say you can either live with it or you can't. And I haven't heard from anybody. So that's where I'm struggling. But I appreciate y'all's efforts.
I will tell you, though, that that's possibly our fault, because we have had meetings with the industry, and we have not sent them to meet with the commissioners. I mean, they're certainly able to go meet with the commissioners if they choose, because it's a legislative matter. But, but I will say this, that we have seen, we've had meetings, one or two with Uber, and one, two, or three with Lyft. Lyft was at the meeting that we had in the police department, the most recent meeting where I was. They may have been at the previous one as well. So I will say, they started operating before they came to the table, all of them did. But they have been at the table. Now, I don't think that you're going to get them to all say, and of course, the transportation network companies pop up sort of all the time, too. We've, we have Uber and Lyft, who I think are probably the big dogs in the industry currently, and they've met with us. There are others in the industry that we have not met with, and may or may not have any plans to operate in the city. I don't think that we'll say that they will embrace the changes that we proposed as what they want, because they really aren't what they want. And I don't know if they'll, but they can't, sort of can't speak for their drivers, because they're only an app company. But I don't know what they'll say. But I know that there are some representatives in the meeting today of at least one of those companies, so you'll probably talk to them after this meeting adjourns. But, but I would say that they have, they have talked to us. And they've been pretty open and good about telling us what, you know, what their business is, and what they'd like to see in the ordinance. What they'd really like to see is free market and no regulation whatsoever, and trust them to do the regulation, because they have a business interest in making sure they don't have bad drivers and bad cars. But that's not where the staff wanted to recommend. But they have been giving us input, fair, in fairness.
Well, again, in closing, I would say, thank you for what you've done. I think we still have a ways to go. And I would recommend, whatever we do, before we actually change an ordinance, that takes a couple of readings, and then we have, if it doesn't work, we have to come back and change it again, we consider doing a trial run to see how our new partners perform, and if we can do that. And I see you wincing, so tell me.
I don't think we can do that. I mean, council can't say that things that are prohibited by ordinance are okay. I mean, that's not a thing council can just do by fiat. So we would have to change the ordinance. I mean, there might be a way that we could change the ordinance to allow somebody to operate outside the ordinance by agreement. But I feel like that's sort of dangerous grounds to go down. We've done in the past, you know, two ordinance, two readings isn't all that awful. I mean, we have done in the past a commitment then to come back after four months or six months to council, and tell you how it's operating, where it's, what we see, or the problem, the good and the bad, and then with a commitment to revisit it in three months, or four months, or six months. And we've done that in the past. So, sorry, that was my wince, yes.
That's, that's good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Free market at the expense of our constituents' safety, I don't think that's a good deal. But anyhow, let's go back a little bit. Let's retract. Because there's two items we're dealing with here. We're dealing with Uber X and Uber Black, right? Two concepts. One is more a limo-style service, that's Uber Black, and Uber X is a taxi-type of service. Am I correct so far?
Yes, sir. With, well, Uber actually has about five or six different things now, and Lyft, I think, would be operating, if you had to draw a comparison, I'd say more like Uber X, but they probably won't like that comparison. So really, there are a lot, but I think that what you're saying is, there's a luxury end of this.
There's a luxury, and there's, exactly.
And a non-luxury end of this, which is absolutely correct.
All right. Now, the one that is not the luxury one, is not serving just everyone. They can pick and choose, and we have a few problems with, especially with our handicap, because they can, nobody can force them to go and pick up a handicap. They don't have FCIC, NCIC, NCIC background. We checked that when we went to the Florida Legal Series. And simply, they have not respected our ordinance, our policies and procedures. They just have come and imposed themselves. And they continue doing that, without disregard of what's going on at the city, and why we have this. Why are we still entertaining dealing with those people? Why are we still looking to, I mean, at the expense of our, of the safety of our constituents? We have, as Commissioner Jim Gray said, we have rules and regulations. We have taxi drivers who are struggling out there to make a buck, and now we have these people competing against them. We have people that are in line to fill some of our slots. And we still, we're still entertaining to give the opportunity to people who have just come here and imposed themselves? They have not even sat down and talked, well, they have sat down after the fact, and they're not even here today. So are we going to continue this trend of allowing people to come to the city? I mean, everybody else in any kind of, any other business in the city, they have to go through permitting, they have to do all kinds of things, all kinds of rigamortis, to get to what they, what they need. But all of a sudden, this industry comes in, and they just want to go ahead and impose themselves? And we have to adapt ourselves, and we have to come up with laws and regulations to let them in? What's with our taxi companies that are already in here? What's with the taxi companies that want to come in, that are in line to come in, waiting for slots as the city grows, to come in? I mean, those guys have followed our rules and regulations. I don't think it's fair we continue doing this. I think it's, we need to sit down at the table, and if they're willing to follow our rules, just like any other taxi driver has, fine, we'll negotiate. But we are not going to come up, we should not come up with new regulations or new procedures to just cater to them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I think that was more of a statement than a question.
That was a statement, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ains?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jody and Byron, for this presentation today. And I agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Ortiz, because that, that was my concern before. You know, you have a company coming into Orlando, or companies coming into Orlando, and we have a set of rules or procedures to go by, and then they just refuse to do that. And I think the last conversation was concerning the airport, and how they just continued to violate at the airport, and even while we were having our hearing, that there were some violations going on. And I'm sure that there are other violations that are happening even today. But at the same time, it's really not to, to me, to accommodate Uber or Lyft. It's just to bring our, and strengthen our ordinance, specifically in the area where we talk about NCIC background checks, which includes a national database versus just the state's database, and then increasing the penalties, because obviously some people are not getting the message, for violation up to $500 for each, each offense. But Jody, I wanted to kind of get a little bit of understanding, a little bit more about creating new category for permitted vehicle for hire within four-passenger capacity. What, what does that mean?
Well, right now, we have three categories of regulated vehicles for hire, essentially. I mean, we have other things. We have petty cabs, and, but one category is the metered cabs, which we have a limit on. And the other category is the limo and luxury vehicle, which we, which are unlimited, but have to charge by the hour at a minimum of $35. And they, we have some standards for those vehicles, in terms of luxury, you know, types of vehicles that we consider luxury. And so what we're, I guess what we were proposing is that we have a new category of vehicle for hire that falls a little bit in between those two, that we don't put standards on the type of vehicle, except that it be able to be a driver, hold a driver and four passengers. And that, that's that sort of class of vehicles, really no standards other than a vehicle that passes a safety inspection with a driver and four vehicles, would fall in that sort of in-between category. And so, so that's what we're talking about, is creating this in-between category, where the vehicles that are registered with a transportation network company might operate. Other people might operate there, too. People who would love to have a taxi cab permit, but have not gotten a permit through our lottery system, when we've expanded those permits. So it's just a class sort of in the middle, where other vehicles might operate.
So then, does that mean that this kind of expands the opportunity for some of the smaller taxi companies to be able to get into the business, wherein-
Yes.
-we go through the lottery system, et cetera?
It would be, yes.
Okay. So it provides more opportunity for everybody across the board?
Yes, sir.
And not specifically for, just for Uber or Lyft?
No, sir.
Okay. And then, we talked about remove market barriers. And what does this really mean?
Well, there's some reasons, there are things right now that the transportation network companies, I guess, would have to comply with. They can't get a taxi permit, right, because there's a limited number of those. So the only category they could go into right now would be the limo or luxury car category.
Okay.
And they would have to have a limo or a luxury car, and they would have to have a $35 minimum fare. So what we're really talking about is removing sort of those two barriers, to rethink the minimum fare, and to remove the, and the vehicle classes. And then I guess there's a third thing, they're supposed to be arranged in advance through a third party, and to make it clear that using an app, or booking it on the internet would, would be okay for this category. They don't have to go book it through the hotel concierge, or the, you know, the stand at the airport, or whatever, that we now require of our limo and luxury vehicles.
Okay. And then, for the NCIC background check, will there be an additional cost to that background check, or is?
I think they're currently paying $24 to run the FCIC background check, and does anybody know the answer to that, whether there would be a, if it goes up, I suspect it doesn't go up by much, but that would be, the burden would be on the driver applicant.
And the reason I ask that, because would we have to also put that into ordinance if there is a higher cost, that we want to make sure that that's covered?
Interesting.
Or if we're going to bargain, and, you know, have a FCIC, NCIC background check, that it's just one cost for that?
Right now, the ordinance only says that it's a background check through FDLE, and the way that it's been administered is that the applicant writes a check to, and we have outside companies that do that check for us, that have been contracted with the police department to do that. And the check that the person writes is actually to the company that does the background check, so whatever the cost- so whatever the cost of that background check, they, they've been traditionally bearing. It hasn't been a cost that was set by council. It's just been the cost that we've gotten through that procurement, as far as I can tell. Right now, it's $24 to get the check done, and we, we charge $25 for the permit itself. So, I don't know if they would charge $35 instead if it were FCIC, NCIC.
But I thought we did set the price for the background check, when we?
I think we do set it through our arrangement with the outside consultants.
Okay. All right, and Commissioner Ortiz was talking also about Uber X and Uber Black. And obviously, it's two distinctive type of services, you know, that they are providing. But for the limo or the black car service, it's not required that you actually post rates on the outside. And what we were talking about here is eliminating posting any kind of rates on the outside of the vehicle. But I guess kind of what Commissioner Stewart was saying, i- if we don't have any identifier outside that car to know that this is a taxi, what kind of position are we putting ourselves in, and what are we creating? Because I think the public needs to know what they're actually getting into.
Yes, sir.
So, how do you feel about it?
Yeah, I don't think we wanted to eliminate markings that identified the car as a taxi. I think that, this came from the regular taxi cab industry as a request that, so their cars could look a little more upscale, I guess, than having, you know, price tags all over them. And they said, really, they think people don't stop and look at the price tag on the outside of the car, they look at it when they're in the car. That was an industry request, but, but the markings as a taxi cab would remain, and certainly, there's no reason we couldn't require some kind of identifier for any vehicle for hire that was permitted under our process, whatever that legitimately might be. But no, sir, I, I don't think we ever thought that cabs should not be identified as cabs.
Okay, so, so the cabs, even with the new category for the vehicle for hire with four-passenger capacity, they will have some type of identification on the outside of the vehicles to indicate that they are a taxi?
If the taxi, certainly the taxi, we weren't talking about eliminating any requirement that the taxi say taxi. If it's the wish of council to have a, some kind of outside identifier on any vehicle for hire identify, I mean, we don't do that for limos and luxury cars, of course. But if it's the council's desire that in this new category, there be some kind of designation on the outside of the car, we'll put that in the ordinance, so.
Yeah, see, and because Uber X is that Uber unknown, and that's what's happening now. People are getting into the cars, not knowing what they're getting into, and that, that's the kind of concern that I have from the taxi perspective. And you're right, from the Uber Black or the luxury vehicle, no, you don't want to have that kind of thing on there, because it takes away from what the concept is trying to achieve. But I really believe that we should have something requiring some identification that says whatever taxi company that that person is representing, even if it's a magnetic sign that goes onto the side of the vehicle, and at the end of the day, you can take it off and then use it as your pass, your personal vehicle and that kind of thing. But there needs to be something that the public should see and that they know what they're getting into. Because we all know about the latest incident in Orlando where you had the groping, and, you know, it's as if someone asked for it and this kind of thing, the driver felt, and, you know, we need to try to eliminate as much as we can so that we can protect the I think for our next steps, obviously, is we've got to put this thing into ordinance form, and we need to move forward, and we need to be really serious about doing the business of taking care and protecting the public, because we don't want the airport to be frustrated, and we don't want our people to be frustrated, and, and certainly, you know, as it relates with getting a permit to build a building, we do that without any problems. But yet, to just come into a place and not even try to get a business tax receipt, you're just trying to skirt the law, and that's where I have a real serious problem with that, because your intentions are not honorable. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart?
This is a question probably, I guess, for May Ann as well as for Jody, and it's, I forgot to mention it earlier, but it's a broader question, and that is, there's a large movement around the state to be able to have the state preempt some of this information. So, so the question really is, in a broader sense, is anything we're going to do, I mean, I guess we run, always run the risk that the state could come back and preempt and create a class of vehicle. Today, these vehicles don't fall into a class that's stated by the state by definition of ride share. So, I mean, what's the, what, where do we have a feeling about where the state is going?
I can answer that, Commissioner. There was a discussion, I guess, in bills filed during the course of the last legislative session that did not pass, that would have prohibited local regulation of limos, I guess, or the category that Uber Black would fit into. So, it didn't pass?
Didn't pass, but.
But it make, but I suspect it will come back. Commissioner Ortiz can tell you that we were at a meeting of the Florida League of Cities where there was a representative from the Uber company who said, if we don't get the right to operate in the cities, we'll go to the state. And then the League of Cities said, geez, we know people there, too. So, I don't, you know, so I don't know. It was stopped last session, but I suspect it, it might be back.
I guess the question is probably a role, the role of preemption of the state. What would the state preempt? It would create a class of vehicle that would not be regulated by the local cities?
It might take over the regulation of transportation network companies and preclude regulation of those operations. It could.
And then according to us today, that would be a nine or $10 million revenue. I mean, if all of a sudden they decide that taxi cabs and are all going to be self-regulated or regulated by the state, I just, I mean, I'm just trying, trying to understand.
It's happened in some states, but, but that may be a peculiarity of how, how vehicles for hire were regulated all along in those states. Virginia's got state regulation, California's got state regulation. But I think, you just don't know where the legislature would go, but I think the Florida League of Cities was pretty strongly opposed to any preemption.
But there's nothing we can do in terms of how we draft or how we proceed legally to prevent preemption. That would really be a lobbying issue, I think, for, for us to make sure the state understood how vitally important we think it is that this be regulated on a local level. But I will say that in general, we often talk about, to the extent we do a good job regulating, we have the ability to say to the state, look, we've got this covered, our scheme works, and it protects the public, and it protects industry, and as long as we're transparent about it, and we've had industry's input, I think that helps tend to insulate us. But there's nothing legally we can do in terms of how we draft this ordinance, except do the best job that we can regulating the industry the best we can.
I'm just thinking of the red light camera issues, where we had the red light camera, they came back and preempted, and then grandfathered some in, and didn't grandfather some others in at the same time, and then all of a sudden, next thing you know, the court system's making a decision. I mean, that's, I got a feeling that we're on the same path down the, that same kind of track. That concerns me. All right, thank you.
Okay, everybody's lit back up again. Byron, did you have a comment?
I was going to bring it to close and talk about those next steps that we're prepared to talk about next step, so.
We have some additional questions and comments. Commissioner Sheehan, then Commissioner Ortiz, and Commissioner Hill.
And I'll be brief, and, you know, I mean, I know there's been some comments about why are we doing this, but I think it's important to, to react to the innovation, you know, I mean, if we're, if we never evolve, we could still be using horse and buggies to pick people up downtown. So, I mean, we got to be, you know, we've also added petty cabs, we've added golf carts, we've added other alternative transportation or vehicle for hire. So, I do think that we need to, you know, to embrace it, but with reasonable regulations as the industry changes and evolves, and I think our role is to ensure the safety and fairness, public safety in terms of the insurance and licensure and things like that, and background checks, and fairness in terms of the rates that are being charged to the, to the general public, that's what vehicle for hire regulations do, so. And the concern about Tallahassee, they always want local control until they want to take it away from us, for whatever capricious reason. I mean, they've, they've done it to us on billboards, they've done it on recycling, copper, the copper theft stuff, they've done everything, so.
Adverbal taxes.
Adverbal taxes. I mean, Tallahassee's constantly overstepping. They always want local, they say, local control, local control, local control, until they want to take it away. So, again, you know, they're hypocrites in that regard, as far as I'm concerned, and yes, y'all can quote me on that, they're always trying to take away our local control. Which, again, if, if they want to come here and take responsibility, that's fine, don't take away our authority. But I do think that, you know, in light of the fact that we have some concerns here, we do need to act and see if it works, and, you know, again, it's, we need to be the innovators. A lot of times, we are the innovators when it comes to this stuff, and sometimes they do mess with us. Shopping carts is another one. We tried to get the shopping carts all over the streets, and they went to Tallahassee and took our right of way to, to get the darn shopping carts off the street. So, again, they'll do it to us, but I think it's important for us, we're Orlando, we innovate, we, we, you know, we're constantly coming up with new and innovative tools to help the public, and, and that's what we do here. So, I'm in agreement with putting some reasonable regulation in and not, you know, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater and say, let's not do anything innovative, because, again, we are Orlando, and we are innovative. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz?
Commissioner Sheehan, I'm, I'm glad you said, huh, to help the public, because that's exactly what we're trying to do here, help the public. And in terms of Tallahassee, I believe Uber has tried to lobby up in Tallahassee. Of course, the Florida League of Cities is overwhelmingly opposed this idea. We have our transportation committee meeting, and we heard, and the reaction was pretty negative in terms of Uber, at least Uber X at the point. I don't think there's that much controversy with Uber Black. But Tallahassee, we have not heard anything yet, concrete. I think Uber is still trying to lobby and get to that level. We haven't heard anything about them. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, sir. Yes, I just wanted to elaborate that I agree with Commissioner Sheehan about innovation, and also pay homage to those that had, were the forefathers, or if you would say, those that have paved the way for these new innovative companies in transportation. But I'm also for the people. Byron, can, because we wasn't a part of those meetings, what are the drivers' response? How are they saying this would be an asset for them and their families?
Some drivers that attended, of those that attended, some commented, some are hopeful that, you know, there'd be an opportunity to open the door, that they could then sign up, or, well, frankly, many admit it, they are currently driving with Uber as well, and they believe they like the concept. There are other drivers who wanted to point out, though, that they have to operate by certain rules and regulations, and they think it's only fair that anyone who's in the marketplace have to abide by the same rules and regulations. So, we had, we heard from both sides. And to that regard, I do want to point out one item with respect to why you may or may not have heard from the industry to date, and that is, we were very clear, and I'll take responsibility for that, if that was not what the council wanted, but if we thought it would be best, we just thought it'd be best that we try to capture the comments, the input at this point, and then leave the open, opportunity for open comment when we come back with an ordinance. We certainly suspect you'll hear a lot more from a whole host of folks, from all sides of the issue. But to keep this manageable, given the complexities and the changes that have occurred throughout the country, we were trying to simply provide a model, or at least a framework, that we could capture those comments and present it to you in a fashion that we did think, and the comment made to the industry at all the meetings where I did not hear and certainly have not heard anything from the council, that certainly said we could compromise on public safety, public confidence, and public trust. So, we've held very firm and steady on those items, but have attempted to find some balance, a reasonable balance to provide some alternative transportation modality in this community as well. And so, that may be why you haven't heard from folks, and certainly, why today at work session, because I told them this is more for us to get input from commission, and that would not be for an open forum just yet, that opportunity would come in the future. So, I just wanted some to make comment about hearing from the industry, and I didn't want any of them to feel slighted, because I was very strong in that point at the industry meeting about their opportunity for comment.
If you represent a transportation network company, would you raise your hand, please?
It's not necessary. You represent a transportation company that is permitted in the city, that has its own amendments, and we are here to find out what's happening to those companies.
Okay. And Uber's represented, I know, is Lyft represented? Lyft is represented, okay? All right, Byron, next steps?
So, with respect to those next steps, the thought is, we now have heard comments, we believe, well, we've certainly taken very copious notes, and with that, Jody, you said about the task of drafting, drafting the ordinance, and it would be our intent to then bring the, those proposed changes, we'll try to capture that. Of course, we will do individual briefings in some of those areas where it may be a little less clear to us on the, on the views, but knowing that we have a great starting point, you saw the categories, saw the recommendations that we're working towards, and the feedback we've provided, perhaps November 7th, in about a month or so, we'll be ready.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we would contemplate, perhaps, being ready for first read November 17th, and in the, that me, meantime, work on the specifics, and have an opportunity to come and do briefings as we finalize that ordinance for consideration, Mayor, on, for first read at November 17th. We can elaborate more in the, in the briefings in terms of what we believe we'll try to accommodate with respect to the collective comments that we heard today.
Okay, and so I'm totally fair here, if you represent an incumbent transportation company that is currently regulated under city ordinances, would you raise your hand? Okay. Thank you all for being here.
And let me add one, because I did mention that the work session that I would represent some of those views, and thank you for pointing that out. There were certainly some expressive comments about eliminating our entire system, and there have been proposals, the proposals submitted, that would, so please.
Eliminating what?
Our, our current concept, no permits whatsoever, just open up the process, hopefully so that anyone can enter into the marketplace. Say, for example, like, unincorporate Orange County, you don't need a permit to operate, they don't have a cap as well. So, that was a comment, and I was, I neglected to mention that, but I did say I would also include that in the comments when I gave an overall synopsis of what we heard.
All right, thank you, Byron. Thank you, Jody. You have one final thought?
One final question, please, and thank you, Mayor. I know that, Jody, Jody, you mentioned that there's different companies within the Uber system, and I know that the additional changes we're proposing here would be, I think it would be appropriate for you guys to come over and let us know about the different companies, and how this is going to apply to each one, each individual system that they have. I mean, if we, if we get to that extent, because this is a little confusing, this is a little open in terms of these changes to the chapter, how is this going to benefit or not benefit us in terms of each one of those companies that are, I mean, if we're allowing, we're opening the doors to these companies, or to these different systems that the company that Uber has, and the other?
I don't think that requires a response, you just in the briefings once, when we come up with a proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor.
Dress Black and X and whatever other entities there are. All right, thank you, Jody. Thank you, Byron. Thank you, vehicles for hire staff that have worked so hard and diligently on this over the last several months. That'll conclude our workshop for the day. Those that were here for that, you can take just a couple minutes to take comment.